No. That's why we sit way back here. We thought we should just hang ten minutes. Let our presence be our own.
Yeah, that's always helpful. Just a little minute, hey, somebody say.
Good evening. Good evening. Mark the call with this meeting to our couple of things that I want to reiterate from the beginning that will not have any attacking anyone up here, attacking their character or anything like that. If you're out of line, I'll be, I will ask you to leave. And if you leave, there is a subject to a court proceeding if you are removed from this public hearing. Town council meeting. We're here to do what's best for everyone that lives in the city of Westboro, that lives in the city of our great town. I hope everyone had an awesome, wonderful Thanksgiving. You were full and you got everything you wanted. All of that above. I just ask that you continue to strive for excellence. That's what we're about, striving for excellence. So at this time, I will ask for invocation from the Reverend Joey Ann Bennett of Everly's Baptist Church.
Most grateful God, as we come, God give you glory, give you honor. We come, thank you for another day, another opportunity. God, we actually be in the midst of our meeting today. We ask God to put our hearts and our mind on one accord, God. Lord, help us to come up with what's gonna be best for everybody, Lord, in the county, Father. God, we give you glory, we give you honor. Order our footsteps, God. 'Cause we know if you order our footsteps, God, we can't go wrong. Lord, put us all on one accord, Jesus' name we pray, amen.
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 I made a motion to approve the agenda. Some of it. All in favor? This is an agenda approval of the minutes from November the fourth, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve. All in favor? All in favor? Three to one, Mr. (inaudible). Alright. We're down to public comment. Public comment, two minutes. If you're presenting, three. Other than that, it's a two-minute procedure. And who's up?
First one is Ms. Jones.
My name is Jones Jones and I'm a Baptist pastor. Seeing nuisance offenses. And then you go against what he says, but the city manager was just in love with the neighbor that he found something back in 2019 where the former manager wrote a letter of nuisance to property owner. But now, that's half, we're halfway there with that, maybe. And then if this debate, I'm sending complaints on the nuisance hand. And then if we can get on the criminal aspect of it. Because it hasn't been quite six weeks ago that somebody over there on that particular street was shot and got the hospital seriously injured. And it's not getting better. It's just worse and worse as the days go on. And anything that you guys can suggest, recommend, would be so, so appreciated. Now, we're almost halfway there. So if we can get all the way home, that'd be wonderful. Mr. Baggs, something like we got back safely. Thank you so much. Any questions, man? Do you still need that general statute number that I gave you last night? If you think that I can give it to you again?
No, ma'am, we have, I have a quick question. You said someone was shot on Orchard Street last week?
Not last week, about six weeks ago.
Okay.
No, it was last week my house was broken into again.
Your house on Orchard Street?
I do, sir.
I mean, your rental property?
I do.
That, you're saying your rental property was broken into?
I did.
Okay. Not your house, your rental property?
Yes, a rental house, yeah, but it's still broken in.
Yeah, I was, who's gonna make sure we talk, we talked to somebody, your house?
It's not a personal house, it's a rental house.
Any tenants in it?
No, sir, I can't rent, I can't sell it. I've tried. Nobody wants to live on that street. Not even on a rental basis.
So fake it.
Sir.
Fake it home.
Right. If I could, I would, trust me, I would. If I could find somebody that would agree to move and get in that foot of the street, it would be awesome. I cannot find anybody. Every time I tell the name of the street, oh, no, 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 they back up. They just will. Sorry. Any suggestions?
Do I have some suggestions on that?
Yes, sir, do you?
Oh, yes. Donate it and we can turn it into a place for the homeless people to live.
That'd be a nice idea.
Instead of the post office, get them off the street.
Because I think Mr. Schiffer's got a piece of property down there close or access to something close that they wanted to build something on. So, yeah, we need to start doing some things to tidy up cleanup. We got to.
Okay, but that's.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Anymore?
Yes, we have a, Ms. Barnett.
Many greetings from Charlotte, Carolina. Tend to come to Westboro often. I was here two weeks ago. Mother, son was found in the woods. Mr. One man named Contral. Basically, to the department, got the answers that she needed in reference to her autopsy, in reference to her son's death. And then a couple of years ago, well, Maria Melton, who was fortunately profiled by an officer who wanted to lock him up at a local church during church hours. He was successful in getting his case dismissed. But today, I'm here again. I firmly agree, again, from Charlotte. The organization is called True Healing Under God. Nineteen ninety-four, my brother was shot and killed by my cousin. Both my brother in prison, my brother's killer in prison, which was my cousin. After something called the Bean Man March, Washington, DC. After that, we began working full-time in civil rights. So to date, in seventeen states, we've worked with about thirty lawyers and fifteen states. Just recently, we got the Goon Squad locked up. If you go over the Goon Squad in this city, you see where some officers shot a young man that's not where he lived. He was sentenced when he got six months sent to prison for a hundred and thirty-two years. Little history. We have good times and bad times. We have rallies and marches, fights for Trayvon Martin and Jack Robinson. But today, I'm here because we've been disturbed by some of the messages and words that have been passed along to your town manager. Fast out ethnic intimidation, which is a new law. Slightly new, a lot of people don't know about it. And I'll read it to you real briefly, or quickly, rather. Ethnic intimidation, what is that? Ethnic intimidation is if a person shares because of race, color, religion, nationality, or country of origin, assaults another person or damage or deface the property of another person or threaten to do any such acts, he'll be guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by imprisonment after two years. The quickest way we can punish someone for that is a hundred and twenty days in jail. I had to utilize this charge twice last year in Hivery and in Charlotte. So today, we're here to stand boldly, and let you all know the town manager, Mr. Wiley Ross, has been targeted. We're gonna be sending out demand letters this week to individuals, individuals who have been targeting Mr. Ross. And anybody else that tend to come against the town manager in any kind of way, we're letting you all know that we're gonna be protecting him, so to speak. And so, disturbed by the time. He's here. He's here to make this thing better. And all of that, try to target him. Anybody coming from maybe you or O'Gough, but for people on the outside, those people that I had to deal with in Rancan County, people I had to deal with in Oklahoma, that's why. So I want to make sure that Mr. Burley has passed the council.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me? John Barnett, our brother. Your father started in Charlotte.
No, no, he doesn't. They think my father's not.
He's not, okay. A good friend of mine, now. Y'all are not related?
Nothing.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Don Sellers.
Good afternoon, y'all, nothing. I'm speaking to the council here. As a member and a taxpaying member of this community, forty-eight years, thank the Lord, in September, I've seen a lot of stuff. And right now, we in trouble. Knowing the shooting on Orchard Street, we had a young man come here for a video of his mother whose life was taken. So, then the young man came here for the video for his mother whose life was taken at the gas station. And then down here on Auburn Marshall Street, we had another individual shot. We had a car stolen right around here just the other day. So my question to y'all as a taxpayer, I don't, I don't care what the goal is, I need a plan. I need to know what plan is. You, the last meeting, I saw where you spoke up about Orchard Street. If you've lived here any time, you know where the, where the thing is. I think we had an issue at Oak Hill. You know, Oak Hill brought, was brought up in the meeting. I think they couldn't even get kids off the bus to call a gun line. We're sure y'all can go back and look at that. And I think you mentioned Orchard Street, which you go with the family. So now we get to a point where even up in Franklin, we've had officers shot at. So we, our violence is getting pretty rough. So we, we need to come over the plan. And this blame who? They come at me, they're attacking us. It's, it's time to stop as a community. And we need to put our foot down. Coach, you've been here a long time. We, we, we growed up, kind of together, grew up under you. It, it, it's not, it's not a joke anymore. It, it's time to put our foot down and be serious. Our youth that you have raised are killing each other, are shooting each other. My age. I know I'm old, but I'm your age. So thank you.
I'm ten years older than you, sir.
But you're right for that too.
Okay, next we have Tammy Noel. We got updates on the Christmas break.
Okay, we have a meeting in tomorrow to go over the last little bit for the Christmas break. For Christmas break, we now have sixty-seven people who are signed up. If any of the council members want to be in the parade, I've got Mr. Davis. And I need to know, I need to know like yesterday, so that I can get you in the lineup. They didn't send anyone for Mr. Davis, but I don't have one for anyone else that's on the council. I need to get them into the lineup so that we can get that lineup out to everyone tomorrow.
I will.
You will? Okay. I need to get your email and everybody on later. Okay, the other thing is after the parade, we have the tree ladies. We have got a pop-up market. We have got about five or six trucks that are gonna be here to provide different kinds of foods, as well as Oliver's will be open. We have talked to the different businesses that are downtown. We have about eight or nine of them that are gonna be open, running sales, running specials for Christmas in the village. We've got blowups, we've got places for people to take pictures, and we're hoping that there's a good turnout. I've also gotta call into the paper to see if we can get the parade map into the paper so that the residents and anyone else can see where the roads are gonna be closed and stay out of the area so that they can figure out another way around. Does anybody have any questions? Well, that's the update, and we will see those to be after we here in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we're on.
I'm gonna make a very specific choice. Uh, I have three. Council members, please, I'm asking you highest. Y'all supposed to represent the city. Don't represent anybody else. Okay? You don't know what I mean? I'm gonna tell you just like this. Y'all supposed to work together, not work against each other. Some of y'all gonna say, ah, we work together. I don't think so. Something like that. Number two, I hear a lot of stuff. I've been a lot of places, like I told you before, I know a lot of stuff that y'all don't think I know. Ain't nobody on this board that don't have to tell me neither. So I'm asking y'all something. I'm about to go with you. Do you wanna leave? Mr. Matt?
Mr. Lanzo, we're not into top personnel with you, sir.
Well, it ain't be personnel. This, I said, not personnel, but out in the street as well. Look at the word like that.
But we want, we want a top personnel. Please respect that, sir.
Okay. But I, I, I know about, so I'm not from here. Number three, what he talking about, dump, I didn't know dump the year we called ball gather. We said the same. What I think of what could fix the problem? The town council, the county commission. If we all, y'all get together and go in the neighborhoods as more not, not councilmen, but as people who care about the county, who care about community. I think that would work. But if some people don't wanna go, it ain't gonna work. But you need everybody, it gotta be a team thing. That's the only way it's gonna work in this county. You know, some don't go, some don't. I know the commission, they gonna make all kinds of stupid. But guess what? You gotta think about, if somebody's child got killed, and some are gonna get killed if you don't stop it.
There ain't nobody else back in the court?
I don't have anybody else on my sheet. I mean, you can come and do your two minutes, come on, sir.
I'm just signing up.
Alright. I wasn't gonna say anything, but what I hear. You guys wanna pay the court? Okay. This is why, I just wanna say this openly to the, from, from one end to the other. When I hear the terms of Orchard Street, Oak Hill, or Murrewood, understand that poverty is driven by economics. So when you talk about people that are in, in poverty because they don't have jobs, don't have, I used to sell drugs. Those were my part-time thing, 'cause I came up with my allowance or a part-time job, so I hustled in the street. So what, what a lot of them have is the opportunity they have is to make money, 'cause every man wanna take care of his family. Whether the money is provided by his job or is illegal. He wants to, every man wants to take care, provide for his family. Secondly, if you don't know who Marvin Zanger is, if you don't know about Planned Parenthood, if you don't know the terms of social modification or social engineering, how are you gonna clean up what the system designed to tear up? Please help me understand that. How are you gonna clean Orchard Street when it's a system designed to create another Orchard Street, another Oak Hill, another Murrewood, and you look back at it and look down on it? I don't understand this. Somebody breaks up back in the house, they squirm. I see her come up here, every week, I show up about the same stuff. But it's against people that don't have the opportunities, 'cause I wanna talk about four hundred years of advancement for people. You don't wanna talk about that? Free labor? And your education system is a joke? We even wanna stop the jobs from coming to Alson County twenty, thirty years ago, and now this is a fruitless fall for the tree. Maybe it makes sense.
Is there anyone else? Not? We're down to going into the motion to go into public hearing.
Senator.
All in favor? We're now in a public hearing. A proposed joint, proposed zoning request to rezone property from R twenty to R ten on Sol, Solomon Street near the intersection, the Harley Street, and third of the street.
Mayor, I'm the council, this is the rezoning request. He came before, this is the owner came before council last month. And this is another part of, he wants to split it half, basically. Is that right, he?
Yes, sir.
He wants to split the property in half.
Council, what's your wish?
He's just, he's building more affordable housing, right?
Yes, sir.
And he's building quality projects.
Yes, sir, he's building, he's built several houses out there. And he's built some more. And this property is, it's an unopened street. But his name, just, again, the street actually, he's been to our school foundation and installed about eighteen years ago. That's what it, same thing we built on that. His father was here the night Connor couldn't show up. He called me.
And he just, the same man that built your house? Okay, you happy with it? I was the second guess, I had to. That's my recommendation. Not all for affordable housing, you know that. Thank you.
I make a motion that is on the.
Well, we're in public hearing right now.
You're in public hearing.
We got some stuff to do. Then a motion to come out, and I think it's on the agenda, but.
I make a motion to come out of public hearing if there's any further discussion.
How's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now back into open session. The council need to vote your desire.
I make a motion that we accept the proposed zoning request to zone property from R twenty to R ten located on Solomon Street in the intersection of Harley Street and third of the street based on the planning board's recommendation.
Senator.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass your numbers. Number seven, new business. Be discussed and considered approval of twenty twenty-five council meeting schedule, month and meeting for the twenty twenty-five. Are there any discussions on the, in the ticket?
I make a motion that we've set the monthly meeting schedule of the town of Westboro Town Council two thousand twenty-five.
One little second. Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Pass your numbers. Discuss the upcoming budget, retreat, and calendar. Again, that was in your packet. I think it starts off with the department heads. This is something that we haven't done in, I think, about two years now, but it's gonna be good to get back to this. So need to, do you have anything, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, this, this wanted to lay out kinda like the calendar events for our budget discussion. It's definitely needed. We're gonna get some help from South Carolina. Central government's gonna come helping for us. So, but this is the schedule for the budget.
Okay. New business. Discuss and consider remitting personnel policy to accommodate the holiday to add Juneteenth to the calendar for the employees.
As a holiday?
Yes, that's correct.
Your main holiday?
Yes, sir.
For the town.
For the town, that's correct. Juneteenth is a national holiday, federal holiday? And it was not only the towns paid holidays for employees. We added this year one director for that. Can we afford it? Yes, sir, we can. It's, 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 uh, you know what I mean by Juneteenth, you have the tent for it. But Juneteenth is where the slaves were free, right? It's something that I think the county service is a national holiday.
So do we need a motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Marine.
I'm sorry, it will have no financial impact.
Yep.
We make a motion maybe then.
So we need a motion to add it?
Yes. Make a motion to.
Make a motion that we add.
Senator.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be, Mr. Manager, discuss and consider Christmas bonuses for the employees.
So this year, keep right here. So this year, we gave police raises. We did not give our other employees any compensation of whatever they do every day for these towns. And so we wanna show some appreciation and give them a vote for Christmas. And that's all employees. So we ask the council to consider approval of giving the employees a bonus.
Mr. Ross, you already got a little bit.
So, yes, so, and Marine will talk about this. Marine, the impact on, she, she's gonna go over some particulars about it, but.
I'm not even that one.
Yes, sir, yes.
Wait, wait, wait. Can we afford?
We can't.
Okay. So we, we, we don't need, if we can afford you being a manager, I think we just decide. What's the amount is what?
Yeah, what's the breakdown?
The amount is what I need to.
So, so there's a couple of plans. Marine, go ahead and just kinda like.
I apologize, I'm not friends for a shoot. I woke up until this evening. So if we were to give everyone five hundred dollars, it would be approximately, five hundred dollars would approximately be twenty-seven thousand five hundred. That would be salaries plus fringe. If we were to give everyone seven fifty, uh, seven, I mean, yes, seven fifty, that would be I want to apologize. That would be thirty-seven thousand five hundred, approximately forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty. And that would include fringe.
Seven fifty.
That would give everybody seven fifty. Do you want me to go higher?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't need you.
Okay.
Wait, wait. What was the thirty-seven fifty, guys? Oh, guys. And I don't have a vote, but I'm gonna say this. We didn't give them a cost of living. Nothing. We hadn't had turnover with the lot of, okay? Only one department, we've had turnover, so. These folks has been coming to work, hadn't had, hadn't had a cost of living. Things are still going up. They hadn't been in the grocery store. Things are going up. We may have agreed this, and that's alright, but I think from seven fifty to a thousand, if we can afford it, Mr. Manager, 'cause we haven't given them a cost of living. So we're giving five hundred. Ain't even broke even. Then the hope. We gotta take care of people to take care of what we need. So, guys, I I would like for you to rethink about either seven fifty or a thousand. Can we do a thousand?
A thousand dollars plus fringe would be approximately fifty-five thousand.
We've done it before.
I will say, you know, we have money in the bank, we have.
We haven't given them a cost of living for anything. Nothing. Nothing. We haven't given them a cost of living for anything, nothing, nothing. So, uh, we just gave, we haven't given them nothing, folks, in this... We have to be goo- good stewards of the money, but we have to take care of people that come in here day in and day out and get the job done.
Where's the money coming from? I mean, I thought we were running on deficit. I'm, I'm all for taking care of our people, don't get me wrong, but I hear all this expenditure, and I just, I, all I've heard is things going. And I, I don't hear from anybody anymore. I really don't. I feel like I'm satellite on this board sometime. Where's this money coming from?
You're not satellite, sir, sir. You're not satellite.
Um, hey, where is this money coming from?
You're not satellite.
Um, the financial reports that I've been giving you, you know, we have... We have seven million in cash. Now, it's not all accessible to us. Um, because a lot of it is reserved, um, I, we will have a better idea once the audit is done, for sure. We do have savings in the account.
Now, you can't tell us where the money's coming from right now until the audit's done, or it'll be done till next year?
Well, the money is coming from savings.
What's your recommendations, um, between that seven fifty and a thousand that you were recommending will be still safe, uh, but...
The, the difference between seven fifty and a thousand is, um, two seven, I'm sorry, two seventy-five times fifty people is thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's the difference.
Uh, I'm...
So, thirteen thousand and seven hundred and fifty dollars to us, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars to them. That's, that's how we have to look at it. Like, I'm not... That's...
I'm, I'm all for giving them a raise, but also I want to, we don't have to do it all at one time. Um, I know you got your budget in now, it looks, I'm hoping it looks a whole lot better than it first appeared. And I think they should deserve a raise. Um, do we have to do all of it at one time, or some people are gonna revisit after you have your budget? I'm just asking, 'cause I, I don't, we don't have anything to force, I just wanna know what it, what it looks like.
I don't really think he's talking about a raise, I think he's talking about a bonus.
Yeah, it's one time, it's one time.
Yeah, it's one time allocation, sir.
To get it, just for... We all think of all...
We, we, we've done this up until a year ago. We've done raises, I mean, bonuses for a while, Chief. We've, we've done bonuses, five hundred, thousand, uh, we've done that to show our employees the gratitude from us for the job they do. And no cost of living, hadn't had a cost of living. It's called gas bill up. You just look around at the homeless people that we have right now. People walking the streets, people sleeping in their cars right now. And some of these people above minimum wage. A bonus at Christmas will go a long ways. A bonus for Christmas will go a long way to bring cheer to that family that they're supported. So, I, I don't have a vote, but I do have a voice there. It needs to be where this council takes care of its employees day in and day out.
If I can say, I, I've spoken to Wiley about this in great length. And because of the town's past situation and the fact that we are looking at budget constraints, I personally am a big advocate of bonuses because it is a one and done. We don't have to do this again next year if we can't, but if we give a raise, we're off it. So, giving a bonus is something we can do now, and it's a great time to do it. And we're getting ready to work on the budget and hopefully be looking at different avenues to maybe walk into a raise.
I feel like if we, if we got it to give, let's do it. It's one, one time thing, let's do it. I feel like they deserve it.
Guys, we need to, uh, need someone to make, we need to make, then we can make a motion for it.
I will make a motion for the seven fifty. I'll second.
All in favor? Two.
Uh, everybody, everybody, everybody.
What is, can I ask a question? What is the status of the audit with Danielle and Tabe Watson? The reason I ask is I have a council contact for it.
Yeah, um, so, I talked to Danielle, um, we, we have a couple of glitches, um, with the audit in regards to, um, a couple of the items.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with one of the contracts that we have, and, uh, we're still waiting on a response from the vendor.
Mm.
Um, we've got some back billing issues, um. She is going to be requesting an extension on the contract due to that and, and a couple of other issues. Until that is addressed, then we can't get, uh, Watson to do their piece of it. And I do need to reach out to them and find out when they're gonna be able to start looking at it. So, I'm in contact with Danielle. I was actually on the phone with her a while on Wednesday, and I have to reach out to her again this week.
Okay, thank you.
So, what, so, so what we, we, we going on, the seven fifty of the down?
We already said...
We paid seven fifty.
Bonus. Seven fifty, thank you. Discuss and consider amending fire code ordinance. What's that?
Mayor, council, what you should have, uh, in your packet that was provided to you, uh, is an updated revision of the, uh, fire code ordinance. Uh, and basically, what you got is the very first page. What we're doing is just amending, um, our twenty eighteen code, uh, when it was voted on, uh, in twenty twenty-one to, uh, basically, we'll never have to come before you guys again, uh, to amend it. The North Carolina Building Code Council is who, uh, comes up with the fire code, the building code, so on and so forth across the state of North Carolina. Uh, once they approve it, we're, we have to follow it, um, there's no deviating from it. And so, in the, uh, the original ordinance back in, um, January of twenty twenty-one, there's a few words that was, uh, left out of it, uh, that didn't clarify some stuff, and so, um, what you have before you is a new one that clarifies everything, and Mr. Bates has, uh, uh, looked over it and reviewed, so we're just asking you guys' blessing on this.
We need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we accept the ordinance amendment in written.
I'll second.
Mr. Manager, you take the cue.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, this is a change of job description for the, um, title of office accounting manager. We're gonna change it to, uh, accounting, office accounting supervisor. And in your packet, you have job description and some of the language that we changed, and just basically changes from, um, uh, accounting manager to the county supervisor, and reporting to the financial officer instead of the finance manager, um, instead of the, um, town manager, which is what we did. So, this is a job description change.
Make a motion to discuss...
Can I ask a question? The preferred qualifications, who is, who is in this position now? Is this Dee Dee's?
That's correct.
Okay, so, these preferred qualifications, these would be for successors to her in her role now? If she would leave or retire?
That is yours, that's...
Okay, these qualifications, the preferred qualifications do not apply now. Her preferred experience, but I'll really cover that for her anyway. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify a case.
Make a motion that we consider revision of job description for office account manager.
Second. Need to vote. Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I am H. Discuss and consider updating CAD system for police cars?
Uh, yes, Mayor, members of council, uh, I was just made aware that our CAD system is not, um, up to power with, uh, the, um, national law enforcement standards. In other words, our officers can't communicate with dispatch via the computer, um, they have to go on the radio. Uh, the norm across the country is officers are able to communicate with other, other agencies via computer and also dispatch, right? It's a safety mechanism, and also along with that is, I'm gonna turn it off, also along with that is, um, is GPS, right? So, if an officer is somewhere and doesn't answer the radio, uh, the CAD system will identify where they're at, right? Uh, this is something that we, we should have had a long time ago. Uh, I was appalled that we didn't have this.
Amen.
It's a safety issue. Uh, so, we're gonna, uh, take the funds from our asset forfeiture, uh, and pay for, uh, the CAD system update, uh, for officers.
How much will that cost?
Um, somewhere around thirteen thousand, if I remember correctly.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to, uh, consider updating council for police car?
I'll second.
Vote.
Aye.
Pass you notice. Donald Stanford Ford.
No, that's mine.
Mr. Jones. Is it all flowing downhill or uphill?
It is flowing downhill.
Good. We in great shape, sir.
Uh, the only thing I have, Mr. Mayor, council, this been a last month, concerned about this big ditch on Maple Lane. I contacted the company out of Borough Bullington, they, they put in the oil rail the cars.
Good.
They, I asked him, give me a estimate on it, and he said roughly thirty dollars a foot for going round, plus fifteen hundred dollars, and he can get some specialized, in cap, and so, you know, a hundred foot would cost you three thousand dollars. I looked at, uh, the whole mill, if you was wanting to do the whole plant, it's about three hundred fifty feet, so, you were looking twelve, fifteen thousand dollars. But I, you know, he gave me the information I had to make, uh, see, and I don't have that money in my budget, so I didn't know that information. And I asked him if I could change the system, steel tables, and he said that's not appropriate for that application. He would recommend he would install it because he didn't, he got somebody rigged, he gets sued on it, and he would not put in change. That's why I have a question.
Uh, I have one. Uh, citizen reported to me a water leak on Florence Street, said it's been reoccurring. Said you might know, know something about Florence Street, South Solomon Street.
Yes, sir, uh, Long Bay Street, dirt road, uh... You know, they're about, we're checking into it tomorrow.
Been wet past two, two months, come on.
Okay, this is a little too many to handle, it's, uh, dead end, about three hours on the end, so I'll check it, we'll check it tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
So, I...
Of course, if we do, so, you're saying they can't be done enough?
It can be done, but I don't have the money in my budget to do it unless I took a pile bill from it or something like that to do it. I could use pile bill from this, but that's gonna mean it's a hazard, paved streets. So, is that...
Yeah, we can take a look at that and, and see if, um, um, we're staying in terms of our credit for the tile bill money in terms of the street maintenance. And I know I had a couple citizens call me about some, some street pavings and some sidewalk they want, um, installed. So, we'll take a look at that and see if we can, um, kinda address that a need as well.
Can I ask a question about sidewalks? Um, is town liable if somebody trips and falls on one of these sidewalks, the really uneven ones? And if so, can we not get some kind of grinding done, maybe hire a company, get a crew? I know that grind half the sidewalks in town, but, uh, especially up town, there are a lot of, and I'd be concerned we have rates.
It's got to be more than an inch difference in elevation, uh, you shouldn't be able to see that, but you are correct, we have a lot of this, uh, in Portland.
I would think we'd have to probably, uh, refer to the town mayor, I mean, town attorney in reference to any type of proven evidence, right? On our part, if someone goes to...
Right. So, Mr. Bates, what you say, would we be liable for that?
Maybe in certain situation you could, but generally, I mean, you're going past some governmental immunity to cover that. It would have to be extraordinary circumstance, I feel like.
Is in, can you, the town's extraordinary circumstances, can be...
Well, I mean, it can be, uh...
That's really rough.
If we left a sidewalk, we were gonna work on a sidewalk, and we left it in poor condition and didn't have it blocked off or something like that, then obviously that would create some liability for us. But if that's just deteriorating sidewalks because the concrete's chipping up, I don't know that there would be enough to buy one also there.
Okay.
And you're saying it has to be, is it any time we'd be doing that too?
Yes, sir, that's what, uh, pretty much I've used in the past, and we, and we've done quite a bit of replacements, and I got some... We have, we did budget some money for sidewalk replacements, and we do some good either, so, I don't have a lot to come around, I don't...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rose.
Yes, uh, that's the finance member, Frank Robles.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Um, in your packet, you received the thick budget versus actuals report. That's the details report. In addition, you received my summary with the graphs. Um, and what that shows you is that we were thirty-three percent, thirty-three point three percent through the budget, um, at which point we, um, only received sixteen point seven percent of our budgeted revenue, which is, um, close with what we should be at at this point of the year. Um, come January, we'll be collecting, um, the bulk of our revenue with the tax money. Um, however, this time last year, we were only at eleven percent, and this year we're at sixteen point seven percent. So, we're doing much better this year. Um, last year, we collected seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. This year, we have collected one point one million. So, revenue collection, we're doing much better. As far as expenditures, we are down a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars from last year. Um, uh, we are thirty-two point two percent, uh, of the budget, co-, um, expenditure wise, and we're at thirty-three percent through the year. So, that's where we wanna be. You're looking at, where are we through the year? You wanna look at where have you spent through the budget? So, we're right where we wanna be. Personally, I wanna be way below that because that means we're saving a lot more money, and that's where I wanna be, so we can play kind of catch up there. As far as, uh, water and sewer, they are exactly where they need to be as far as revenue, and they're approximately ten percent below budget in expenditures. So, water sewer is doing great, and as far as cash and investments, we are sitting with about seven point one million dollars in cash and investments. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, Chief, um, Cheney is working today. He, uh, out on the streets, so he will not be able to be here. So, um, I... So, um, I'll just go right into, into my, basically, uh, like Marie said, uh, we are, um, um, have saved a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars thus far this year. We are felt tightly, we are watching every expenditure, uh, that we have. And we are making a conscious effort, uh, to be perfectly responsible, right? In everything that we do. And so when we recommend a, a, uh, a bonus for employees, uh, we have identified the source right now. So, uh, just want to make that clear. So I want to say, um, a couple things, Christmas parade, we definitely, um, will be participating now. Our department head will be at the meeting tomorrow. I have a conflict, but I, I can't be there, but they'll definitely, uh, be able to, uh, engage, um, the event organizers and make sure everything goes well. We'll make sure that it's a smooth, uh, event like we did for Halloween. Um, I was able to participate in a, um, a, uh, very, uh, exciting time at the Waysboro Primary Elementary, uh, last week. Uh, it was farm day. And so there's probably pictures of me, um, with, uh, of, of, uh, holding a horse and also, uh, uh, you know, the pigs and everything, it was really interesting. So the kids enjoyed seeing us, the staff invited us, it was a great time, uh, to, uh, to, to be out in the community. And with that, um, just everybody, happy holidays, everybody? Anybody have any concerns, certainly you can email me, call me. Uh, if you come to the office, you want to talk to me, I'm not, uh, in the meeting, you can definitely, um, come and see me and I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you. A lot of people do a lot of things. If you come to the office and I'm not busy, I'll talk to any citizen. I'm here for you, I work for you, hear your concern, we're going to address your concern. Mayor, for that, if I have.
This time, is there any council coming?
I received two phone calls, um, last week and wanted to know what was the status of, uh, the Boulevard for Miss Daisy Smith, nice.
So the, um, the state is having a hearing on December the fifth because he had, he had to be out of office, uh, I think thirty days. Uh, so they're gonna have that hearing on the fifth, after which time, um, I think, uh, it's gonna be via Zoom. I think his daughter's gonna be on Zoom, um, and some other folks, and then they'll have some questions for, for them. But from my understanding, it's a done deal, right? Uh, it's gonna happen, um, is, um, had been put in place a, a while ago. Uh, so we're just waiting for that hearing to take place from, uh, um, N C D O T.
Anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Uh, I just want to address a, uh, post on Facebook in regards to Michelle Back. Uh, that has never been an employee for the town of Wade, local police department, uh, or such by the name of Michelle Back. Uh, people who report this kind of information to the general public, uh, do harm, uh, to, to the town of Wade's Borough. I don't feel like they have the best interest of Waysboro, North Carolina in mind when they do these things. We have opportunity to, uh, if you engage in that on Facebook, which I refrain from doing moving forward, uh, you at least should have the wherewithal to advise the public, properly give them the truth instead of, uh, weeding in the mud with, uh, citizens who don't have the best interest of Waysboro in mind. So I just want to squish that, uh, little bit of controversy in regards to, happy holidays to all citizens, hope you enjoy your family.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Beautiful, little bit today and whatever you can do, I'm grateful. And I just like, thank you all for coming out, being concerned about, we're going in our, um, county, because it's, it's all our county. We all, uh, live here, we all want to see a better place. Because we know crime, uh, because about two weeks ago, a week ago, I had shoot note in my, in my neighborhood, right across my, right across the street from my house. I mean, right, my house is right here, this house is right here. So I know crime is bad, but, you know, we have, I understand crime have just not begin to get bad. It's been bad for a while in Anderson County, so, you know, we come up and try to do all we can, you know, to keep it down, you know? But, uh, I don't care where you go, you're gonna find some crime somewhere. You know, wherever you go, it, it's always gonna be some crime somewhere. But we can do our part to try to, uh, do as much as we can to help the police officers that are out there. So they'll be safe when they're out there. So I just want to say thank you all for being concerned, uh, continue to get behind the board of officials, you know? Um, every idea is a good idea, you know? Um, we talk, that's what we're here for, we talk, we come up with ideas and, and we see what's gonna be best for the people. So it's not about us, it ain't about us, it's about all of us. All of us come together, working together. So again, I just want to take a thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, other than if the citizens are concerned, we try to come up something that they'll get involved also. You know, citizens involved, that would happen. I, I have no problem what you say, but the citizen has to be involved.
I, I, I agree with you saying it.
Mayor, can I, can I take it real quick? I just, I do want to talk about, just real quick, the police department and the staffing level. So right, right now, we're at, um, nine officers. We've got three officers that will be coming out of academy, uh, next week. And then we've had three more applicants that put in, right? So we're rebuilding the department, right? So we're, 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 we're definitely, um, chipping away at the folks, you know, the nervous that left and to rebuild our department back up. When I gathered, I think we had fifteen people on the department. Um, so it is definitely a, a priority of mine that we have safe streets, our citizens are safe. And while I'm here, I make sure that happens, right? And we're gonna hire the best and the most qualified and get them out there and get them out there protecting the public. And that's what we're gonna do.
A lot of these folks from, that's, that's the academy from Anderson, uh, Anderson County, uh, Waysboro, in fact, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, homegrown.
They live here.
Best interest in the community, want to be here, great.
And one more thing, we also have to understand, a lot of the crime that go, go on in our county, it's, it's, a lot of times it's not the people that live in our county. It's people that come in from the outside and there's a lot of crime. So, I mean, we have to look at that also because, you know, there's a lot of people that come in Anderson County and there's a lot of stuff and they leaving. So when they're not always Anderson County people, it's people that come in.
Real, real quickly, Mr. Mayor, would you like to sit down so that you get this economic development guy? And sit down, we, we need to find where we're going and what we're doing as far as economic. What the town can do, what? At the stage now, folks, nobody's gonna come, so we don't have to go to Raleigh to get what we want. If we sit right here, we're not gonna get anything. They're gonna bypass us and they're gonna keep going. But it's time for the council and everybody to pull up and we've got to go and what we want. Display, Mr. Brody, our senators, what we want, what we need. We live it. So Mr. Manager, the task you, getting with the economic development guy, we need, we, he's being hated. We need to find out what's going on, we need to be informed. Where, when we hear, well, there's nothing here, and if I don't know, I can't tell you nothing. I do know the seven eleven is coming here, but, you know, we need more seven eleven. We, we need more seven eleven. The other thing, Mr. Manager, uh, this, this is the season now where people will take things, hold up, do some crazy things. We have to make sure that our convenience store, our patrol at this season right now. Everyone, we need to be on high alert. Okay, sir, we have to get more, we need to be on high alert at this season for what's going on. You know, they staking out, they, they're professional. If you will, like the NFL players, they're professional people that took them out. I mean, they, so we, we can't let our guard down. I know we may be short-staffed. We, we got to get people where they need to be from here on out until the season's over. We, we need to do that. Those are my two things, sir, economic development, patrolling our streets.
Can I just, I'll be real quick, so, um, I, I did, I met with, um, Representative Brody, uh, last week. And we talked about that variation, sir, uh, that we need, um, uh, more engagement here in our town, right? We need some help, right? And, and he's aware of that and he, um, he's working on that, so, uh, that, I'm glad you mentioned that. And then certainly the police presence absolutely during Christmas time, it's gonna be more folks out there, um, doing more, you know, crime and restaurants and everything. So you're right, we do need to be more, uh, mindful, um, have our, have our officers patrol them more. So I will get to the chief, the representative, sir.
Thank you. The sheriff's department here, help me?
The sheriff's department, uh, ended on, um, November twenty-seventh.
Mr. Wiley, um, um, I had a lady that, I think she went to the police chief's office, tried to get some information, pass that to young people. Um, some of my sense of you about it. Anyway, she was trying to get something, get to the young children in school and stuff, you know? And, and, um, they didn't have anything. So I think it should always be something where you can pass out to young people. So I would think that where, you know, if there was controlling, murderwood and all that place like they say, are they not passing out flights? Some, you know, information, you know? Didn't we not send an order, boy, that you had to be in a certain time?
You mean in terms of the, the curfew?
Yeah, they, they would have that in there.
Yeah.
So, so if we should have something like that, that if when she went, she should have been able to get some, to pass them out.
We didn't even mention about the curfew, that is correct, we didn't.
Yeah, and, and she said that, uh, they said they didn't have it.
I'll share the chief on that, thank you, ma'am.
And also, um, I'm concerned about all these rap stores that we got because I see a lot of young people that got the rap, they're smoking them and I know they're not old enough to have them.
You're saying the vape stores?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about that because I know they're not old enough to have them, but they're walking around with them smoking.
Thank you.
Yeah, but the parents ain't the one vulnerable.
So, my mark.
So, we still need to know why they getting them. Thank you.
This time we need a motion to go on the closing session.
I have a motion, one closing.
I'll second.
Okay. We're now.